Okay, why don't we begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, just as it is for all. I'm trusting that everyone got the minutes of our last meeting on November 23rd.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
There's a couple little, a couple little English things here. On page two, uh, one, two, three, four paragraphs down, Mr. Scrum also showed noted the revised site plan. And then on the last page, the second paragraph down, the board advised that it will review, handle the modification of lot one.
Okay, I'll fix them.
And let's, let's go back. And what was your first comment?
No, the first one was on the second, on the second page. Fourth paragraph down.
Yep.
It just says, Mr. Scrum also showed noted, you know, any, either one or the revised site plan.
Okay.
And then the last page was paragraph two of the board advice that it will review slash handle the modification of lot one. They're just English things.
Yep.
Okay. Richard, are you going to renew the motion subject to those changes?
You know, I, I will, but if we're going to make a discuss, if we're going to discuss whether or not they've actually submitted a site plan, that may be something we want to talk about. On page two. Tech, technically, from our standards, there's been no site plan submitted. And if we're just my comment, I
We can cha, we can just change it to plan.
Okay, that's, that's
Than site plan.
Okay, I'm okay with that. That's good.
Okay, and Anne, you're going to second it?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Alright, the motion, motion carries, minutes are approved. The first item on the agenda is an application by CNY Premier Homes. This is with regard to property located at 7117 East Genesee Street Fayetteville. This is the initial parents for a site plan and an accessory use permit at that location, which is all on tax map number 085-08-10. Is there someone here on behalf of the applicant?
Yes, John Zeller, I'm here.
Okay. And can you just tell us in your own words what, what you're intending to do and why?
Well, uh, we purchased the building with the intention of moving our real estate business uh, into that building once renovated. Uh, so that's the, that's the plan.
Okay. We're open to questions from the board. The board has questions about what he's doing.
Trying to find my notes.
Can we pull up the plan, Lisa?
Yeah.
Mr. Zeller, this was previously two separate lots, but now it's now one tax map, one, one lot.
No, I believe it's, it's uh, two lots, 419 and 420 is how I have it on my, the survey.
Okay, okay. And I guess well, I better define that better. It had been two separate lots, but now it's one tax map number.
Right.
Okay.
I, I think we need clarification. Is it in fact one tax map? Parcel.
Now I have to get back to you on that. I don't know if it is, if it is or not.
Well, I, I think that the issue is probably going to be you show parking on one parcel, the building on the other parcel. I think it needs to be one parcel if we're going to move forward with this. And I'm just speaking for myself.
Uh, that, that's likely the case, Rich. I, I know where our, our screen share has a little, um, a little hiccup, so I'm pulling out my, um, my plans.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. No, no worries.
Yeah, I, I think, I think it's one tax parcel.
You, can you get on, on?
I think it is.
I, I'll have somebody pull it up right now and just verify it. I think it is one.
I think it is, I think it is two, John.
Yeah.
I think it's two, two, originally two lots that were hooked into one tax parcel.
Okay, and is there, is there?
As a technicality, even though it, at some point, the, the county may have combined them into a single tax parcel, we would want to have an official re-subdivision combining them into one so that we can count everything on the site. So, yeah, it, again, so John, it doesn't matter if it, if it was one tax map just for purposes of town of Manlis, we want to make sure it's one consolidated lot. So it, it'll just, it, it'll be a simple, a simple subdivision, a simple combining of lots. We'll make it part of this site plan process.
Yeah, in that case, I'm okay. It makes sense.
We'll just mark that, you know, we're, we're going to, we are going to do that. It'll be part of the process.
I'm not prepared with the, with this property. Is, is it now a dwelling?
It is. Yep.
But it's in the RM zone, so you know, they have some flexibility what they do.
Sure.
But it's going to be, does
Anne, you're on mute.
Will it look more like a residence or a commercial building?
It will appear more like a residence as it does now.
It looks terrible now.
Yeah. We're, we're working on that. We're working on that.
There were some plans, Anne, that were submitted that made some changes to the property and, and they looked pretty good. I don't know if you, I don't know if you saw them or not.
So I think this board needs to take a look at those. We're at concept right now, but we should review whether you want any, if you're happy with the elevations, right? So that's number one, and they, they are in the package. And then the other question is the, um, is the site plan, which is on, is it on L1 drawing, if you all have your drawings there? And it's sort of way, way in. I couldn't find it at first.
John, I just had a couple of minor comments from the hearing standpoint. I'm glad to see Zosmer Frisch involved. Ray Scruton's done a couple of projects in this corridor, so he gets it along there. Just, just a few minor things, um, you know, is there, is there going to be any additional lighting? Uh, what type of landscaping might you have? Um, what are the size of the parking slot sizes? And then the one, the one that we usually ask in this corridor, John, just because it's always been sensitive and, and to, um, to your benefit and then to the neighbors' benefit. And Ray, Ray can attest to this and other projects we've done. If we could just get, um, a letter from your design professional with a few quick calculations that indicate that, um, stormwater will remain at the rate, um, at, you know, either at the rate or less than the rate than it is right now. And, and sometimes, sometimes what we've done is we've just put in a couple of little rain gardens or, um, you know, small retention areas. But, um, then in the future, that protects everybody. If someone says, well, you know, it never did that before, then you can pull out the letter and say, well, you know, here's our design professional. And, and it's usually just been on an eight and a half by 11 with a, with a few quick calc and, you know.
Yep.
And I'll just, I'll just add, that's why it's important that it's one lot now, not two, because one lot is vacant. So that stormwater is important.
Um, what, how would we handle a materials and color presentation? Since we're not physically there in person.
Is there, is there an approval for the, for the exterior color?
I think it's all something that, that this board could, would want to look at, the entire elevation.
I can, I can get just some color. It's, it's not colored on the plan either, so. Uh, that was to be determined. You know, we had some ideas. It's a, it's a, uh, it's a stucco finish building. And it will remain so, a smooth concrete type finish. Uh, but we will add color to it to make it, you know, to make it more appealing. It won't be pink.
There's ba, there's bands. I, it looks like contrasting colored bands on.
Yes. Yep.
And taking that garage off is a good idea, too. I agree with that.
Where will the parking be?
Joe, you're muted.
On the other lot, Anne.
Oh, okay.
That's why it's important to have these two lots as one.
Sure.
Joe, you're muted.
Just, just a quick look on, on GOV. It's, it only reflects one map. I, I don't know what the process is for combining them or if that, you know, or if that is, uh, an indication that it's combined already. I, I don't know.
Well, uh, well, we'll have Lisa check our, um, our town records to see if it's been combined. Probably was just combined for convenience, but
Yeah. If it is combined. I had only, I had only noted one map number when I filled out the application, so. And, and I just confirmed it's, it's that way on, on GOV, uh, in their database. I don't, I don't see a second one. So.
Well, well, the survey, the survey we have shows two, so that definitely needs to be clarified.
Yes, I, I will do that.
I think, I think it's a, I think it's an us thing, right? We have to see if it's ever been combined for the, for the town purposes. If it hasn't, then we'll get it combined. And a, and a re-subdivision.
Yep, that's fine. That's fine.
Are there any further questions? I think it's probably time to entertain a motion for a scheduled public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
I, were, Doug, did you think you have everything that you need? I, weren't we waiting for some more information? You have what we need?
No, no, that was it. Just the things I told John. I mean, it's pretty straightforward, right? Lighting, landscaping.
Yes.
Size of the parking spots, the stormwater letter, and then confirm the one lot. So, you know, I think it'd be great if somebody upgraded.
Do you think you need those all in before we schedule a public hearing?
No, no, that's fine. We've worked with Ray before and I know he'll come through with it.
Okay.
I don't, I don't see anything that can't be mitigated.
Then Anne, did I hear you making a motion?
I did.
I'll second that motion.
Motion seconded by Richard. All in favor of scheduling a public hearing?
Aye.
What's the date, Joe?
So can I jump in real quick? This has not been sent to the county yet. So their meeting's not till January 6th at this point?
Oh.
So we'll need a meeting after that, Lisa?
That's what I'm thinking. So then our meeting will be January 11th.
And I'll second that.
Okay.
Okay, we're, we're scheduled for January the 11th for a public hearing. The next item on the agenda is Harrington Homes. This is for a 34 lot subdivision and site plan known as Harrington Homes at Brandywine. Uh, it's off of Hennaberry Road, tax map number 109-2-7.1. Do we have anyone here for the applicant?
Yeah, you got Matt Naparella, Mark Harrington, Mark Cadenato, and Mark Shute. They're all in my office, so we're masked up today, but we wanted to be together so we can tag team you guys.
Okay. You appeared before us before and you've changed the presentation that you had, at least as far as the lots are located and whatnot. Could you talk to us about the changes that you've made and why?
Yeah, if, if I'm going to try, I'll, or, um, Lisa, I'm going to try to share a screen, see if it works for me. If not, we'll kind of talk through it, but I, let me hit the button, see what happens.
Okay.
Whoops, sure. Do you guys see that or not?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Good. Look at that, we're in. Get over here. So again, project key, Mark Harrington, president Harrington Homes, Mike Cadenato, vice president, uh, myself, Neil Zensmeyer, who met with you guys last time, uh, he's unavailable tonight. And Mark Shute is here, our, uh, local well-watered expert and drilling consultant to chat with, with us about the water system. Discussion points is, um, as we left you guys last time, we came away with three topics that we wanted to kind of review and discuss today. The first being water supply for this residential subdivision. The second being stormwater runoff and the downstream protection of the properties in Brandywine. And the third topic being project density. So jumping right into it, we want to talk about water supply. And we spent a lot of time since we last left, the last left you guys, um, reviewing the potentials for this development. Uh, and we started after we left, uh, talking into, uh, Aqua and Steve Drake and talk about the existing limitations of the water system in Brandywine and what we can and cannot do. Uh, the issues become, uh, elevation concerns as you head south, uh, up the hill. If you, if we use the Hennaberry as a reference point, as you head south on Hennaberry, the grade increases greatly. We could only apply.
Joe, Joe, can I jump, can I jump in? I, Matt, I appreciate this. We, I, I haven't seen any of this and it, it, it makes it difficult for me to understand the things that you're talking about without having an opportunity to see it prior to the meeting. And I would, if, if you could send this to us so we could review it, ask questions prior to the meeting, I would appreciate that. I don't know what the other members of the board think or feel, but that's kind of what I'm looking at this. There's a lot, this project's difficult. I mean, it's, it's not easy.
Well, I, I believe we sent the plans and the revised plans, uh, two weeks ago or so, Rich. I mean, uh, and I'm going to get to those. I just, again, the presentation is just like, if we were there, we would be talking through the points. But again, it's up to you guys, but you know, uh, the, the plans were submitted to the town of showing the, uh, the revisions 10 days prior to the meeting and such. So I don't know if you've had a chance to review those or not.
Yeah, man.
What was the date of the plans?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. You guys are talking over each other.
What was the date of the plans?
Uh, I'm going to flip something here. Hold on, because I've got it on the screen here. One second. The date, uh, December 3rd, 2020.
SK8.
SK8.
Okay, I do, I do have that. How does, what you're presenting tonight relate to that, I guess, would be my question.
Well, it relates, again, we're trying to answer to the questions that were raised last month. We, we, we came away with issues of water supply, stormwater management, and project density. So I was trying to go through those particular items and relate that to the layout and relate that to what is being proposed here so that we can, you know, continue to the discussion and move forward.
Okay, one of, one of the things that I've been concerned about with this project, and I haven't been on the board that long and maybe others have other feelings, but we do have a requirement for 25% slopes and buffer areas from those. And I, it would be nice to know where on this property there are, if any, 25% slopes so that when we look at these plans, when we look at your data, we have a better understanding. And these are things maybe we could have asked before, but as I look at the topo, it's concerning.
Well, again, even at this level, we do have existing and proposed grades. And I haven't done that in a specific evaluation. I will say due to the road layout and in what we're configuring here, we are, uh, that's the reason we're not showing the connector between the existing Hammerhead and this development because of slope and grade. It became cost prohibitive and we're kind of running with the grade of running, uh, in the uh, west to east direction so that the, the road slopes are conforming to all town and county standards as far as road grades and such, keeping that road at, uh, I think just about less than 7% for most cases. Uh, the, the lot grading, and again, I'll have to confirm and, and deal with that, but for the most part, uh, we're showing, uh, uh, well under a 25% grade, but I can, again, you know, short of the area, uh, the, the steep area is really between the existing Brandywine and once you get up to the plateau, you have some other steep grades kind of in these great big lot areas, and that's the reason they're great big lots. Um, but again, we can do that slope analysis, Rich, but this is the, again, uh, that was not a takeaway from the last meeting, and if that's a takeaway from today, we'll certainly do that analysis for you.
Okay, all right. I just, I, I, Matt, you know me, I, I'm a little nitpicky, but I always like to see things ahead of time to give myself time to analyze it, figure out what questions need to be asked, and I feel a little bit, um, behind the, behind the ball here because I haven't seen what you're presenting.
Well, I think if you let us get through it and, and you know, Mark is, Mark Shute is here, and we certainly, again, our, our main takeaway was really the water supply question, and we spent a lot of time analyzing that water supply. And that's really, we wanted to kind of get into, uh, in, into those discussions and let, let the board hear from a local expert uh, with regards to water supply on a, a lot size that is greater than 40,000 square feet and kind of get into that, because that kind of falls into the project density and what we can and cannot do, at least again, the takeaway from the last meeting, that seemed to be a priority of the board. Can we get a water system for these particular lots and the configuration of what, uh, what they were showing? And, you know, frankly, it's, uh, you know, that's why we're here to have these conversations with the planning board to, to properly plan this development. Quite frankly, a development that's been in planning since 2002, uh, when the original owner, uh, had, uh, over 46 lots on the same property. So it's not something that's brand new to the town. It's been something that, uh, the existing Brandywine is a phase one of a multiple phase development. And, uh, Mark Harrington and Mike, uh, you know, purchased that in good faith to, uh, continue a development that's been sitting relatively idle for nearly 20 years.
And Matt, I'm not disagreeing that it's been a, a project that has been under review, I'll say, for several years. It's just, I, I've got some information that's being presented tonight that I haven't seen before.
Understood.
But go, go, go ahead. If others have questions or concerns, I'm sure they'll, they'll raise them.
So we got. Matt, this is Joe Lupia. I, I do have a question for you.
Yes.
Um, regarding the supply of water, have you gotten any reports from any hydrogeologists as to the sufficiency of the water and as to how many homes it can handle?
Well, and that's why Mark Shute is here. Uh, you know, uh, frankly, I think better than a, uh, I mean, I, I would consider him a local expert being a guy who's drilled, uh, thousands of wells, uh, throughout Anadaga County and more specifically water supplies within, uh, within a quarter mile of this site. So if you want to jump right into it, I, I'll let Mark, you know, kind of get on the screen. We can kind of talk about what his experience is here with the strata in the subsurface and water supplies of the wells in the area.
Yeah, I, I can, I can jump in. Matt, you know, consistent with the health department discussions and, you know, some of the discussions we've had with Neil, you know, before we get too far down the road, uh, to Joe's point, we would require some field testing and we would, we would also require that that be done underneath the direction of a hydrogeologist. It would be a series of wells and we'd want to take a look and see what that testing protocol would be, just to make sure that we, you know, we know what the recoveries are, the cone of influence and what the aquifer looks like in and around the area. Uh, just so, you know, from everybody's standpoint, we don't get too far down the road and not have a problem. It would have to be more than just a tabletop or just, you know, uh, natural history. You know, we would look at, you know, uh, physical data with a series of wells being drilled and, you know, that hydrogeologist.
And, and 100% understood, Doug, and I know that, uh, you, I and Neil had some discussions about what is needed. Um, and frankly, uh, we were, we were trying to get some of that, uh, quick data taken care of before tonight's meeting, but the schedules and such, uh, uh, Mark Shute has been pretty busy, but we, we are aware a hydrogeologist will be involved. And we were talking earlier today about, uh, you know, locating the wells and where the, uh, from the test well to a drawdown well and the cone of influences that would be developed. We're kind of hoping, you know, as a takeaway tonight, we would get into those exact requirements, uh, more specifically. And if you're saying, Doug, well, we really want you to have an expert tell us what is needed, then that's what we'll do.
Yeah, what we would look for, Matt, is for you to develop that program and then we would review it with our hydrogeologist.
Understood.
And that's, that's consistent what we've done with this parcel in the past, and we've, we've met with others on the, on the same note to do the same thing. So you're, you're correct. I mean, you know, we're familiar with it. Our hydrogeologist is familiar with it. Um, you know, we, we've talked plans, you know, that's why Joe brings it up. You know, we've talked to the board about that, so. You know, I think the next step would be for you folks to develop that plan. Um, and we can, you know, we can work with you and Neil to, to see what that looks like as, as we move forward.
I'm just going to let, uh, Mark kind of address his expertise since he's here and just to, hopefully it lets you guys understand, we are trying to do the right thing and we're not, you know, we're not trying to slide anything. We want to do the right thing because again, once we develop the lots, Mark Harrington as a premier, uh, home builder doesn't want problems either. So I don't know, Mark, if you wanted just to kind of get in the screen and talk about what you, what you know of the area.
Well, our, our experience in the area is, uh, most of them wells are high-producing wells. Uh, we've drilled quite a few wells right around that development. Uh, most of them up Hennaberry and to the west on 173. Uh, the wells, when you, uh, hit your water supply, it's, their wells are finished in limestone. Limestone is a very high producer of water. Uh, most of the wells were getting 15, 20, 25, 30 gallons a minute. Uh, I don't think there's going to be any issue with a one well affecting the other. Like we say, we always do a, uh, drawdown well, a test well, and a zone of influence well. So, uh, our experience in the area, I wouldn't expect any problems in, in that exact development right there.
I hear you. I, I, I'm not an expert in this area, but I guess I would throw out that one of the things that we would be, that I would be looking at, I can't speak for others, is that there'd be some type of a guarantee, warranty, uh, bonding, whatever, to prove that going forward, whatever your determination is, holds true. And I don't know if Harrington has that, wants to do that or not, but that's something that I would be looking at.
You mean a guarantee that the well is going to pump forever?
Well, I, I, to be honest, if we have, if we have, I know, 30 lots, 40 lots, whatever the number is, at the end of the day, if we have some difficulties down the road, five years, 10 years, whatever, I don't want to be on the hook for that. I'd, I'd want the developer to be on the hook for that. If you are If you are comfortable with the data, with the numbers. I'm just, I throw that out there. It's something that we can discuss and talk about, but it's in the back of my mind.
Right. Well, I think what we need to do, and maybe Jamie and her team has to get involved with this, is, you know, what's a lesson learned and what is a, an appropriate vehicle by which we can apply for this? And, and I understand, and again, like I said, Harrington Homes doesn't want future issues as well. But maybe we can, you know, develop something that is applicable and something everyone can be comfortable with. You know, beyond, beyond having one well for, you know, I was going to get into the density, but our overall density is, I, I, on average, an acre and a half or 63, almost 64,000 square foot lot on average. So yes, 34 lots seems to be a big number, but it's a big parcel as well. And we're close to or well over, not well over, but about a 30% reduction in what was previously proposed on this site. So I think we're okay. But, but I understand, Rich, and maybe we can, you know, work it out with the attorneys of what protections are satisfactory for the town. We don't, we don't want problems and I know you guys don't either.
That's, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, that, that's, that's to be discussed. One thing I noticed on these last plans you submitted, there were no dimensions and there were no acreage.
Yeah, the layer got frozen off, Jamie. But we can, we can, again, I knew we were going to do, we're going to be in, you know, a iterative process here. We wanted to kind of show that revised layout. And really the purpose gets into our next conversation, the grading and how we're protecting the stormwater for those lots on Brandywine. And then in that process of making this in the middle 10 days ago, the, the lot areas did get frozen off. But we have it in the system, I just have to rekick it back to you guys.
Are there, are any of the lots less than two acres?
Yes, the minimum lot area is 40,000 square feet. So 40,000 is less than one acre. Our smallest lot is 43,000 square feet. We have of the 34 lots, 20 of them are greater than 50,000 square feet. And our largest lot is almost four and a half acres.
Again, I think having those dimensions is going to be important.
And I, I can, I can get that to the board before the end of the week. Because I haven't done it, just inadvertently, we, we put the box of the houses and the, the areas got frozen off the plan that was submitted. Again, under concept review, we want to kind of get the configuration and we were focusing on some of that grading and stormwater pieces.
There, there has been some discussion whether a lot that's less than two acres is appropriate for a well.
I think, I think that is not a bad comment if you have well and septic. Well, in a septic scenario, you have geometric configurations that you have to have appropriate separations from the septic to the well. And in a development sense, you have to co-mingle those amongst the neighboring lots. But we are on public sewer here. So we only have well radiuses and well influences to deal with, not sanitary sewer impacts. So now we're just dealing with the availability of a sub-surface or the groundwater and enough water to sustain the number of lots and the demand of the lots. So again, some numbers because that's what I do. If we take a look at a 40,000 square foot lot and we got Mark coming out here and he can find a vein that's only 12 inches or a foot deep, so not very deep at all, across that 40,000 square feet, that provides you over 300,000 gallons of supply. And when we take 440 gallons per day, which is a typical four bedroom house, and you do that math, that's enough water supply for two years. So again, he's got to find that vein, he's got to be able to get that. But when you talk about a 12 inch vein over the course of a 40,000 square foot lot, there's, there's subsurface water to sustain these areas. And again, his expertise is saying, he's, he's, we were talking earlier and not too far away, he was running into drilling wells getting 15 to 20 gallons a minute, which is when we convert that, that's, that's a very significant water supply for a single family home.
How, how many bedrooms in these houses?
They're, Mark and Mike are saying three to four, most of them being three, but there will be some fours.
Okay.
As I said earlier about the water supply, as long as whoever is making the determination is willing to back it up, we can move forward. One of the things I will say about the plan, this probably goes back to Matt more than anybody. We've got finished floor areas on these, on the plan and well locations. That is not something that we typically would approve. So where the, where the homes end up and where the wells are, I'm not sure we really care about. Other people may have other opinions, but as I look at the plan, that's my thoughts. And I don't want to approve a plan that has that information on it.
You're, you're absolutely correct, Rich. We're just kind of graphically trying to represent kind of almost size wise, just to kind of let the board see. I think in a, in a final flat sense, we would show a building envelope based on the town's front, side and rear setbacks. And we would leave it at that and let the builders control how they site them and how they, Mark and Mike will tell you, they, they want to kind of stagger things. They don't want a straight linear type of development like you frankly see on Brandywine right now. They want to have some up front, some further back and kind of make this a, a nice development and scenic as you're driving through the loop that's going to be created. So again, under concept review, that was put there for a, nothing more than a scale reference of this is what a box looks like on a 40,000 square foot lot to give you a scale reference.
Okay, no, I appreciate, I appreciate that. You're exactly right. We like to see the building envelope, so thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is there, is there a reason, is there a reason why some of these lots don't have well locations?
No, I don't, I, I, I'm going to blame Neil for that one since he's not here, but.
You, you have seven lots that don't have a well spot.
Yeah, I know, Mike. I, I apologize for that too. It just kind of, again, the graphic representation of how these things can potentially lay out. But when we work with, again, the hydrogeologist and, and Mark Shute, we'll, we'll nail those a lot tighter and we'll be able to tell you where those are going. If we can, I do want to get into the stormwater discussion. And, and I do want to kind of look at the plan when I do this. And, and because I know this was a part of the conversation as well. And, and one thing that is a change on this plan, whoops, I want to pan, is how we, how we've re-managed and dealt, deal with the stormwater pieces here. What we're trying to do is, right now, we are sitting higher than the existing Brandywine and those existing houses that are running east to west on Brandywine Drive. And right now, we are, for the most part, our development sits quite a bit higher than them. And all of that stormwater runs from the north to the south, coming down the hill and impacting, and once it gets off this steepness of this bank, it's impacting those properties. And I think Doug talked to Neil about this last time, of there's already some of these houses, which are relatively new for us people that have been on Henneberry a long time and saying, well, we've got some problems already, we don't want future problems. And one thing that we looked at, and then we, we get it right from the beginning of the design, but to provide a drainage, almost a drainage dam running east to west and collecting that stormwater. And I know the discussion last time was, well, we want to consolidate where stormwater goes. And that probably was my fault in talking to my designers because D E C tells us you want to not have end of the pipe treatment scenarios. You want to break that stormwater management into smaller chunks and not have big end of the pipe scenarios. But at the same time, that creates multiple stormwater management pieces that does become a more difficulty for the towns to oversee and manage and such. So in this sense, in this design, what we're trying to do here is along, you can kind of see the grades of the creation of a berm here. But beyond that, even as we push here to the east, all of the water that's coming down that hill now is going to be captured by swales. And it's going to be carried to the west along a swell system and drain into a bioretention basin. And we've preliminary sized this based on the existing condition to proposed condition. And, and Doug will tell you what the bioretention area is doing, but that's your water quality basin. It has a profile of material to, to collect that and deal with that first flush of pollutants. From there, the stormwater will go into a detention basin system. Again, more traditionally end of the pipe type of a scenario. Again, this basin has been sized for the 100 year event and is well sized in looking at where the discharge coming off of this property. Now, today, a lot of that water is draining into a lot of different areas. And the tributary runoff to this northwest location is a little bit less. Thus, the size of that basin, which is a significant basin, and we're going to control that runoff to almost a trickle, even up to the 100 year event. And so at the rate of runoff that exists today, we will significantly reduce in the future so that we're not impacting not only the runoff here, but all of these properties will be drier in the future than they are today. Right now, they've got a, they've got a massive watershed that is coming down the hill and is almost, I would say, are like almost an artesian situation bubbling out of the ground right in their basements. We're going to collect at least that surface water, bring it to the west and, and control it and slowly release it. So that's our solution. And again, we can have these conversations about what that means and how we can do it. But I wanted to kind of bring that up because that is a change to where we, we had several basins that were crossing multiple property lines. Now, this bioretention is within one great big lot, so it's controlled. And it's at the end of the system. This bioretention and detention is within this great big lot. So again, two lots are, are your main water, stormwater controlling lots. And they are within easements that can be created. And, and however, we do a stormwater management agreement with the town that I'm sure between Doug and Jamie will work out that language of protection area. And I'm sure for a long time, Harrington Homes will be the vehicle by which those basins are maintained. So I wanted to kind of go through that because I know it was a point of discussion at the last meeting.
Will there be an HOA here created? Matt, Matt, did you?
I'm getting there, Rich. We, I just looked to, I looked to Mark Harrington and, and he's saying for, for this type of system, yeah, he'll probably set something up. But again, it, it depends again, the vehicle, the legal vehicle by which the town wants to manage their stormwater systems. And we, we've seen it in different, different manners, either between a developer controlled HOA or is it, is it bonded or is it a scenario of town maintenance and it's part of the tax scheme, so.
Okay, thank you. I mean, that's, that's an issue that's important to us, so, yeah.
Yeah, I know it's an issue across the town in different areas. And, you know, we, we're trying to do, we tried to do the right thing in all of our stormwater designs. I think, you know, in your previous life, Rich, when we did the resort lifestyle and everyone was saying, what's the stormwater doing there? And, you know, people looked at me and said, what do you mean? How you controlling all that runoff? And we've got the underground systems there. And if you look at that discharge pipe out onto Verdict Street, you'll never see anything but a trickle coming out of that pipe. And it's a big 24 inch pipe. And, you know, it's, we, we're, we try to do the right thing stormwater wise and do proper design.
Now, Matt, that's, that's worked out great. I give it credit, that's worked out very well.
So I, I think, I think the critical component here, you know, we can look at this layout, but we really can't do anything with the layout until we know what we have for public water. So if we don't have a public water system and we're going to go with individual wells, it becomes overly critical to have that hydrogeological study, you know, the fieldwork, the data, you know, all certified by, you know, a hydrogeologist so that we can come back and say, yeah, you know, it's, it's 40 lots or it's 10 lots or it's one lot. You know, often what we all, what we also do to, to, to Rich's point is, you know, once we have that data, then as we would move forward, you know, I would think that the recommendation would be that no house would be built until a well was in place with a certain yield. And that everything was confirmed as we went along. So we didn't get into a situation where, you know, we, we didn't have water for a house. But, but I think, you know, everything that Matt talked about, it looks like stormwater can be taken care of. You know, it's, it's a pretty large site. You know, we've seen this before. But the critical component here is, you know, how many houses can land old? And we just are going to need that hydrogeological report before we do too much more here.
I guess the other question, and, and I, I agree with you, Doug, on that. The question I think for the board tonight on a concept level is, if the hydrogeology works, and of course, you will make sure the stormwater works and it, and it sounds like, you know, it's doable. It, does the layout of these roads, is there any issue with that as far as the board is concerned? You know, that, that would.
So, I mean, what, what we're looking at is a horseshoe configuration. And I know there was a county comment that dealt with the connectivity with existing Brandywine. Essentially, even though visually, when you look at it, it doesn't look god awful bad. But when you, when you actually look at those grades and per, per Rich's comment and you look at the density of these grades, we felt it's just, to get a 7% road grade, which Rob Bushing will tell you, you know, he doesn't want to go any steeper than that for plows and school buses. We were getting into close to 20 foot cuts along this whole backside of this area, which is a, you know, to us, a significant environmental impact versus meeting grade and following grade around here. And we've got a little bit of cut as we reach the, the south portion of the site here, but nothing compared to a 20 foot cut that we were dealing with to accommodate this link connection. So other than that, we've got essentially an isolated development that's a horseshoe, that's not a dead end. And, you know, it's a, a nice, nice development that, again, Harrington Homes thinks that they can do some really nice buildings and, and do a nice thing here, here in the top. I think, you know.
Did, did any of the board members have a comment on the layout? Or if it works, then you're okay with it?
I, Jamie, I'll, because I like to talk all the time. I mean, the real thing comes down to hydrology. Is there enough water in the area?
Right.
To supply that number of homes with water that will not cause a problem five years, 10 years, 15 years down the road?
Right, right.
I, I mean, I don't have an answer to that. But if the answer is, there's plenty of water, don't worry about it. I don't have a real problem with the layout.
That's, that's the question.
Okay, well, we, we got our Mark Shute. What I wanted to do, just to kind of let Mark and.
I don't know what other board members think.
No, I agree, I agree.
I'm okay with the layout. It's the water sufficiency that's the major problem.
So what, what I wanted to kind of do is to kind of show you some of the quality that, that Harrington Homes puts together. And I don't know if Mike or Mark want to kind of talk about some of these, the typical buildings that they're looking to put on the hill.
I, I'm going to speak for myself. It doesn't matter to me. I know the homes that they build. It's more important to get some of these underlying issues taken care of than the final as-built drawings and, and I, I know they build a quality home.
Well, these are just some examples here of, of what we have done. And several of these are actually in the town mailing list, including this one lot that you're seeing right here. So we're, and, you know, we're, we're relying on Matt's team to, of course, make sure that everything engineers, everything works on this site. And there's no doubt in my mind that we can achieve that. And so then it's up to us to make it look beautiful. You know, and that's part of, one of the reasons why we have this horseshoe. It's not just a simple horseshoe. It's a nice meandering drive through this development. And as Matt had mentioned earlier, staggering some of these homes to, again, give you some herb side appeal, give you different opportunities for different arrangements of homes, landscaping like you see on this one here. Just, I mean, just absolutely beautiful. So this is really key, this is really what we're, what we're into. This is the part that really excites. This is the part that really excites me, of course.
I probably speak more than I should, but those are beautiful homes. But if they don't have water, it's a problem. And that's our concern.
We got you. We hear you on that.
Anyone else have any further comments on this?
I agree with Rich.
So our takeaway here is to come back with a water study to show you where can, we can provide water supply. I think what we need to do is to come up with a plan, get that to Doug far as a analysis plan of wells and drawdown areas. Because we don't, we want to, it costs money to drill a well and to do this study. We want to kind of site those wells as smart as we can. And then do an appropriate analysis that engineering will satisfy Doug's purview. And then we'll come back to the board and, and talk turkey about some of these nuts and bolts of other pieces of the civil design.
Okay, okay.
So thank you guys for the, for indulging us. And I'm glad we were able to share our screen so you could kind of see our project. But certainly to, as well to Rich's conversation, we will make sure we provide as much data as fast as we can so you guys can make educated decisions.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Matt.
Neil call me offline when he gets something together he wants me to look at.
Thanks. And I'll be chatting, Doug.
Okay, sounds good, Matt. Good seeing you.
Good night, guys.
Thanks, Matt.
The next item on our agenda is the application by J.S. Penizzaro. This is the property located at Enders Road, 4581 Enders Road in Manlius. This is for site plan approval.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
It's John Langy, attorney for the applicant. I do apologize, as I mentioned at the beginning, I have a town board meeting in the town of Casanova. You have to jump on that Zoom call. However, another attorney in my office, Matt O'Neill is present, as is Greg Scromo. And really Greg, Greg will be doing the heavy lifting. But I'll mention, and Jamie understands it, we've had some conversations earlier in the week about the status of the application. And I think the, the goal tonight is to understand where the board is at with Greg's most up-to-date plan. And to confirm that what we're presenting is an approvable plan in terms of its concept and the features that are located on the plan. And again, I apologize, I may have to jump off. I will turn it over to Greg at this time. The Penizzaros are also on this call. So thank you and I hope to see you at your next meeting.
Okay, thank you, Jen.
So if I can just get, get the board up to speed on what happened this week. Betsy Parmley at New York State DOT requested that the, some town representatives, and it was Doug, myself and Joe Lupia, get on a call and, and talk about this, this plan. Because the, the, one of the main issues is obviously that road cut on 92. And we were trying to get an understanding of what the DOT wants before they'll give that curb cut. And what was translated to us is that one of two things. Well, in order to get the actual curb cut, they would have to have this project a completely approved plan. Not just concept and not just approvable, but, but complete. So it seemed to me that if the Penizzaros don't have, I'm sorry, if I sit here too long, my light goes off. Okay. If, if they, if they don't actually have an, you know, actual party that's going to, they know it's a bank and they know it's a certain fast food, you know, did they really want to go to the expense of a complete and entire site, site plan? I mean, that's totally up to them, but this was a discussion item. Is, and next question was, is there something else that could happen? And Doug, stop me anytime.
You're fine.
Okay, if, if they didn't want to do that or go to that expense, then they would be happy, the DOT, to give a written concept approval that they could use in marketing or whatever they wanted to use, saying, listen, if it's, you know, something that fits within the zone and do what was called a sensitivity study, which was explained to me as being, you know, if it's going to be two fast food restaurants, it wouldn't, it would work or it wouldn't work, you know, and, and do a whole traffic study. And also it was relayed to us that the DOT does want updated traffic study. Doug, is there anything I missed in that analysis or conversation?
No, I think that, I think that's generally a good overview.
Yeah, and, and my concern is, is for the applicant. To me, it doesn't make a lot of sense to proceed forward for final approval on a plan that is likely to have to change down the road. If, if the people who are interested in using the property, whether for a restaurant or bank or, or whatever, do not use the exact site plan, then we're going to have to have a total review of it all over again. And it doesn't make sense to do that. Personally, I don't have a problem with reviewing it on a concept idea as to whether or not the concept itself is okay and it's manageable. And then do the final approval after they have somebody interested in the use of the property. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that, but that makes sense to me. I'd hate to have the Penizzaros go through the expense of doing an entire site plan approval and find out later on that there's got to be some changes in it and they have to come back through it again.
Jamie, what, what you were asking was, I mean, suggesting was that we could possibly approve a concept plan that would include a fast food restaurant and a bank rather than some other enterprise. And that might satisfy, that might be something that DOT could work with.
The only thing DOT would take, they would not take a concept approval to get, to give the actual approval for the curb cut. They would talk about concepts that would work based upon traffic studies. And, and you know, take a bank and a restaurant. Do the tra, the traffics, you know, the traffics, what they call the sensitivity study. See how it impacts what's going on in the area. Get updated numbers and then say, okay, it probably will work for a, a bank and a, a bank and a fast food. And then also in that, we might want to look at whatever's happening on the daycare site. But we would, we wouldn't be able to give our blessing and they wouldn't give theirs. That's the way I understood the conversation with the DOT.
And, and I would, if I could jump in, I, I understand what we're trying to accomplish here and it makes sense. I would, I would caution the board into giving any type of concept approval that could at a later date, give certain rights to the applicant that they wouldn't under normal circumstances have. And so I would say unless we get a full site plan with all the details that, that we require, that we should be careful about getting any kind of a concept approval, since we don't really know what that means.
Yeah, so Greg and I were also on a phone call with Betsy and Jeff, Jeff, Betsy Palmerly and Jeff Deep this morning. And, and I think, you know, Greg made the point that there hasn't been a lot of change, you know, in the last few years over there in that corridor. Betsy didn't really comment towards that, but you know, I, I think what Greg was saying is he, he's, he's done his traffic study with full build out. And I think Betsy came back to the trip analysis, which Greg is still working on. And I think that was the key component. And that kind of goes with what Joe and Jamie were saying is that, that's kind of the thing that the DOT is looking for. You know, how, 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 how big an impact is this going to have through the IGE trip analysis, which Jamie called a sensitivity analysis? And basically, you know, I mean.
That's what Betsy called it, just to be fair.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I mean, Greg will probably talk later, but, but basically what Greg was saying was, you know, you know, he, he thinks conceptually, this is, this is what the applicant wants, what the layout is there. And he's got, you know, we've all seen the drawings. You know, the bank is as big as it's going to get. And he's going to do his trip analysis around that size of a bank. And he's going to do his trip analysis around that size of a restaurant, which he thinks is, you know, as large of a restaurant is what would go there. So I think, I think that's kind of what we had talked about, you know, Joe and Jamie and I with Betsy last Friday. So I mean, it, it sounds like everybody's kind of moving in the right direction. But you know, it's up to you folks, that's.
Right, I mean, I, I guess, go ahead, Mike.
No, it was, it was Rich, big mouth.
Well, I have a question too, but go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm looking at this and it's back to the traffic, the traffic pattern of it again. I, you're coming up 92 towards the light at Enders and Manlius. The light that sits at the corner of Enders there, okay? So I'm coming from the, the top of this drawing into, how does one make a right or a left-hand turn into this area or can't they? How do they get in there? The way this traffic arrow points, it looks like it's only an out.
Coming from the south?
Coming from the village of Manlius?
Can't hear you, Greg. I can't hear me either.
Greg, we can't hear you. We, it's very faint.
And that's what I kind of figured it might be, Greg, is otherwise I, you know, I don't know how you would get in the place unless you came to the light, made a left and went in the back.
That's it, I think.
Yeah, that's the only way. My, my only comment was getting back to this concept. And I, what we've been shown, I personally think makes sense. It looks good. It would fit on that corner. But we don't know if that's the final version of whatever it is that will be there. And so, again, I would caution the board to give any type of a, of an approval of a concept that we don't really know what the final version would be. And the state with the right in, right out, which we don't know where that's going to go, could be something that's approved, may not be something that's approved. So I, I'm just saying we need to be careful.
We do not have, in our code, the ability to approve a concept. This board.
But Jamie, that, that to me means we shouldn't vote on it.
Well, if we don't have the ability to do it, we can't do it.
We shouldn't express, we shouldn't express an opinion on it.
I think that what Betsy Parmley was saying was not so much the concept as the types of things that could possibly go there based on trip generation and traffic analysis.
Can you hear me a little better now?
Yes, thank you.
All right, yeah.
Not so much our concept review. So it's either a full review, which doesn't seem to make a lot of sense unless the applicant wants that, or this analysis.
I think the traffic study is where this whole thing needs to go. I think, I don't know, I mean, it makes sense to me. Greg, did you want to say something?
Well, it, without, without some kind of a concept approval, we're really left with either we stop at the point we're at now or we go through with a full-blown site plan package, which is going to be a lot of work for everybody, including the board. But not that it can't be done, because I can easily generate for you floor plans and elevations and storm water management plans and revised traffic impact studies and grading plans and details. We can get to that point. It just becomes one of those things where it's an awful lot of torturous effort for the planning board and for my client to go through for something that will change. I think the, the goal here is to find some way of giving the developer confidence going out and marketing the site that these types of uses are approvable for the site. Because the site right now does have a stigma to it for whatever, you know.
Well, I, I think that, that the zoning code tells you what can be there. And, and I think that's also what Betsy Parmley was getting at is to go through those uses. And, you know, say if I had a 5,000 square foot fast food restaurant and a 2,000 square foot bank, then X, you know, as far as traffic. If I had, you know, a 10,000 square foot fast food and nothing else, then X. And I will tell you that an allowed use, provided it meets all the other criterion, is not, isn't going to be denied if it's an allowed use. And I think that was what this whole issue about the zone change was, was to say, hey, these are going to be allowed uses. And, and I am quite sure that this board has no intent of preventing an allowed use or two, if we can get two on there. I, I think some of this exercise has been really important because you've heard from the board, particularly with the way the, that last plan was shown, where the entrance that came off Enders ends up feeding into the corner lot quite about halfway up the lot. You know, those kinds of things that we've discussed, I think have been, you know, clear. And the board has expressed some, some preference in that regard. I, I think, and Joe, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, we talked about not, you know, doing a concept approval, but the discussions lead to certain.
That's what I was thinking of. You know, not necessarily any vote at all, but a consensus, getting a consensus from the board members as to whether or not they are of the opinion that the usage appears to be appropriate and that the drawings and how it's intended to be done, that they have no general objection to it, subject to later further definition with respect to the right in, right out and traffic study. Because my personal review of what, what I've got here, I'm not opposed to what you're intending to do here. And I'm, I'm on board for what you're attempting to do, subject to the state giving us approval and subject to the traffic report.
And, and I think we, we needed a storm water analysis as well, Joe.
Well, we, we do at some point, yes.
Right, right.
So with, with, with the things that, that we set up, I mean, I think it's one of those things where maybe for tonight's meeting, we just move forward with the concept plan we have. And, and, and see what, I've got some answers to some of your questions. And we've, we've, we've addressed the, I think, all the concerns on the current plan that's in front of you. And then from there, I can discuss with our clients what, what they want to move forward with and see if they, you know, at what point they're satisfied with and what, you know, or do they want to just keep moving forward with a, you know, full site plan approval? I think that's a decision that's probably going to be made, you know, later, not tonight. But I, I do appreciate the comments. I think, I think everybody's in their same, trying to find a mechanism in which we can all kind of move forward. So with that, maybe I can go through some of the concerns that were raised last, last meeting and how we've attempted to address them and see how they fall in with what the board's desires are.
Please do, Greg. I, I would, I would like to jump in before we go there, because I think personally, I don't think that's necessary, because we have this concept plan that we can talk about forever and it never becomes reality. Typically, in this type of. a scenario where you have a commercial piece of property that is being marketed, whether it's for sale, for development, whatever the case may be, the person that steps forward and says, I would like that piece of property is going to have certain contingencies in the contract that says, I need to get approvals from the town of Manlis to do whatever it is that I want to do. And those approvals may include moving driveways that we have in between the two properties. It may not even be a right in, right out. It might be something else. I don't know. And so for your client to spend money to talk about conceptual ideas and plans without having concrete ideas and plans. Again, I'm just one person. I'm just looking at this like this doesn't make a lot of sense to me. They have a commercial piece of property. They should be able to market that and allow somebody to step forward and say, I'm willing to buy it if I get A, B, and C. Short of that, I don't know what we're approving.
Well, I think tonight you're just reviewing. So we're just reviewing the concept plan. And then tomorrow I can talk to my clients and they can decide they want to move forward with elevations and stormwater and traffic and anything else. Before, before, before I get to that point, Rich, I need to make sure that we've addressed your concerns relative to access and what we've got generally shown, just like any other site plan. We're going to, you know, we need to take it in steps. I can't go through and design everything else until, you know, we take the two dimensional and make sure that everybody's kind of happy with that.
Greg, I think, Greg, I think there's a long way to get to a site plan and
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. I, I agree a hundred percent.
And the SWIP may show that the driveways that you have on the plan don't work anymore. Or that the right in, right out doesn't work because there's got to be a detention base in there. And that's all I'm saying is that it would be better, I think, and it's up to your client, I'm not your client, for them to find somebody that would be willing to step forward and say, I want that piece of property and I want to build a 6,000 square foot restaurant, whatever it is that they want to build there and come back to us with the site plan that's fully developed for our approval, denial, whatever it is that we do.
I, Rich, any site plan that's going to come in front of you is going, is going to come in steps. I mean, because just, just because we need your input. Okay. We just like the last meeting, there was some great input that came from the board. We were able to go back to our drafting table, make some modifications. And now we're back in front of you to see if those modifications we made meet with your approval before we go back through and do the stormwater. Now, you know, I, I understand what you're saying about the stormwater. The right in, right out is going to be where it is. If the stormwater can't fit, we've got it shown for whatever reason, it'll go underground. Or it, you know, will, you know, be all the way on the other side of basin, it'll be deeper or something. But you know, those are, those are things that we normally don't get that deep in until we've got a two dimensional layout that meets in general what, what the board would like to see. And that's all we're trying to get to right now.
Yeah, I think Joe wants to see a little more. So let's, shall we see what you've got?
Sure.
Your person.
Do I mean to share the screen or?
Yeah, Greg, yes.
Uh, let me find. If I'm allowed to do this, because I don't usually do Zoom. Share screen. All right. Does the site plan up?
Yep.
Yes.
All right. So last week, we had a driveway that came in off of Enders Road, made an immediate left into the site. There was definitely some conflicts there with the drive through for the restaurant. And also we thought it was very congested just coming into the, the shared driveway. So we talked about modifying that, moving the driveway towards the center of the site, which the site plan shows. So under the current layout, traffic coming in from Enders would come into the shared driveway, go straight in probably about though 150, almost 200 feet, take a left and enter another driveway which goes between the bank and the restaurant. And, and from there you could, you can choose. They could choose to take a right into the drive through for the bank. They could go all the way to the end, take a right and park for the bank, or they could take a left. Go through a drive through or, or park for the restaurant. Cueing would be entirely on the site, under no imaginable circumstances would cueing for that restaurant leave the site, as you see in some restaurants nowadays. And traffic could exit either back on Enders Road or could head, we'll call it west towards the right and right out and take a right out there and head towards the village of Manlis. Traffic could also enter from westbound on Manlis and Casanova Road there and take a right into the site. And again, just circulate within the site. The, the driveway being modified like this not only enables traffic to come into the shared sites without bogging down the main throat of the driveway, but it also eliminates a couple of concerns. One is there was some concern about traffic going from a lower zone to a higher zone. This eliminates that because that, that traffic stays within the commercial A zone. It also enables us to to eliminate any need for variances for modifications for a daycare center site. As what this really does, it takes that previously planned driveway all the way to west and moves it down to the center point. And then we would just have to move the parking spaces that are currently in that driveway and that, since I can share a screen now. Uh, let's see if I've got same screen. I got, I've got another screen. It has an overlay of has an overlay. Let me see here, because I got two screens going. The screen here shows you how the modifications impact the original site plan for the daycare center. What you see kind of in light is a, a parking that was shown as banked, which would not be put in unless a use change or something happened that would require additional parking. With this modification, the parking spaces in this spot here would be relocated to here. And here's one spot, that driveway was, was originally planned to go in this location. As was shown last week or last meeting. So with that change, there's no, there's no change really in impervious area. Would, would not need a, any modifications in, as far as impervious area, and it would not need any modifications relative to the parking, which was the two zoning variances that were, need to be acquired for daycare center. Now whether this still requires a, a modification to that site is something that I think the, you know, the lawyers can work out or figure out.
Yeah, I, I, Greg, for sure it would require a modification of the site, of the site plan as part of the other, other one, but if the parking counts are the same and the banked parking is the same, it's a matter of relocating it. But I would, I would also say that I, I keep hearing that that the stormwater detention doesn't work on that site. And so whether you decide to go forward with this, you know, plan of full bore or you, we, you go the other route we talked about. It, I think it would behoove you to look at that so it doesn't become an issue for your client.
Is that on a daycare, on a daycare site?
Yes.
Okay. I had not heard that before. So I don't, it's, it's something new to me. So. But I will, I will find out.
I'll, I'll let, I'll let Doug talk to you about it.
Yeah, the N O T has not been issued for the stormwater basin. We've gone back and forth with some of the infiltration rates over the years, Greg. So that's, that's where we are, right?
Yep. I think it was working fine. The N O T was never, was never done. There was infiltration testing that was, was never, was never done. I, I agree with that. I, I was working fine before. Maybe it's not working now. I, I, I don't, I haven't driven by it. I don't know how long, to be honest.
So we just, we just need that documentation that, you know, we were on record with you with a couple of years ago to get the N O T.
Yep.
Didn't be a big deal.
If, if I could just jump into Greg, you had mentioned that the parking spaces that were going to be in the driveway are now moved. And by the way, I like the driveway halfway back in the property. I think that looks a lot better than the way it was before. That's a good improvement. But if you are replacing those drive spaces somewhere else, parking spaces, I should say, and you've got the driveway. My recollection of the Z B A meeting was that, and I'm doing this from memory, so I, please forgive me, but it was 39% lot coverage of what they were building and 55% lot coverage was the Z B A variance for the build out of the parking. So if we are taking and adding this driveway and keeping the same number of parking, that tells me you probably need a Z B A of additional lot covers too. But I'm not an engineer.
Yeah, well, we can double check. Remember this, this driveway was originally planned to be here.
Okay. And, and maybe that's the case. Yeah, I, I don't know.
That's why that easel was there.
Okay, I'm throwing that out. I'm just going to throw that out for you to look at.
Will do. Absolutely.
Again, and the point is to move the project along and not to be back later going, oh my gosh, what about the lot coverage, you know, or parking count?
So I think, you know, I think we've, we talked about D O T. We've, we've got to modify the study. It's kind of odd, you know, it's, it's, to be honest, the whole procedure is kind of strange right now with with, with COVID and people working from home and everything else. My, my, my initial contention is the numbers that we had for the counts at, at Enders and, and Manlis Center and Casanova Road are, are probably still about as accurate as you're going to get. We, we had full build out of all the approved subdivisions in the area built into that count. I don't think there's been new ones and a lot of times we've been seeing traffic actually decrease a little bit. But you know, if we've got to bump it up a percent or two or something like that, you know, to make it work for what makes the D O T happy, that's fine. So we're going to gather that information. We're going to, we're going to give it to the D O T and let them tell us what they would like us to do with those numbers. That is about all I've got.
So, so I think, you know, based on the discussion that Greg and I had with, with Betsy this morning, I, I think just like the last project we looked at, where it was the groundwater issue, I think for this site, I mean, generally speaking, you know, some of the things we've talked about, you know, there, there's some things that, you know, would need to be done for a final site plan approval, but, but generally it looks like the site works. And from the D O T standpoint, what they were really looking at was the trip generation. Right? And, and I, you know, I, you know, I, I think Greg is probably you know, spot on that there probably hasn't been a lot of change with any build out in the area, but it comes down to what his assumptions are for the trip generation or the sensitivity analysis that, that Jamie spoke to. So that, so that, you know, you know, we look at the site and, you know, one of the things that Betsy had told us, you know, if this is, you know, Chick-fil-A or two Chick-fil-A's, the other trip analysis is going to be different than if it were, you know, a jewelry store and a bank. So those are the type of things that I think that, that Betsy was looking for. And I think that's probably, I can't speak for Greg, but I would think that's probably where he would focus on and probably a lot of his original data from, from the last traffic analysis probably is pretty close. Like he said, you know, a couple of cars here and a couple of cars there. But I, correct me if I, if you think I'm out of whack or, you know, with our conversation that we had this morning.
No, Doug, I think you're, I think you're spot on. I, I, you know, we, you know, the, the sensitivity analysis was a newer term for me. But, you know, I think we were, we were, we were trying to do the same, we had the same concept. We're like, okay, let's, let's pick something that's, you know, as big of an impact as, as reasonably can be assumed. So we're not, you know, going back and forth and wasting our time and D O T's time. And, you know, and that's why we picked a bank that was a pretty good sized bank and they're typically a little smaller than that. You know, I think typically we, when we do them, they're 22, 2500 square feet. And now 3,800 square feet for, for, you know, for something like a, like a morning use type is, is big. Chances are it might be like a dual use, which would have, I know, morning use and something, you know, like an ice cream shop or something like that, which is a much less traffic generator. So, you know, we're going to figure out what makes sense there, but whatever numbers they've got to be, you know, they've got to be sensitive to, you know, what could be on that site.
Good, because the sense, the sense I get, you know, and Jamie and Joe are on a similar conversation that Greg and I were on today is, you know, conceptually, I think the D O T, you know, probably is okay with a right in, right out, but it just depends on what the assumptions are of what's going on that site. So, you know, potentially it could be quote unquote a black box, but if Greg's assumptions are that it's, you know, F, Y, and Z, and we go back and we look at the assumptions for the I G E trip analysis and that correlates to something that makes sense, then I think that's what we're trying to accomplish, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
So Greg, we got the same goal there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
At this point, Greg, I think we've got to leave it up to the applicants as to what they want to do and, or whether they want to move forward for final site plan approval or whether they want to back off at that issue until they have somebody specific that wants to do something specific. Which, which seems more concrete to me, but, but it's, it's their decision.
So if I can get kind of a, you know, a quick temperature, you know, relative to layout and, and what the modifications that we've made, it seems like the board is thinking we're in the right, going in the right direction. Am I, is that a logical assumption? And I, just because if tomorrow my clients say, you know, let's move forward drainage study and traffic analysis and all that. Now we have some confidence that we're not, you know, spinning wheels here.
Can I, can I ask the board members if they have an objection, significant objection to what's going on, if they could tell Greg that now?
I think they're going in the right direction.
Thank you, Fred. Joe, I, I, this is Rich. I, I think they're going in the right direction. I think what they're proposing for that site makes sense. The, the, the issue or the problem that I have is we really don't know what will be there in a final version. And the right in, right out, I, I think the state will take their temperature after they figure out the, the traffic study, which may change. I mean, I, and Doug, you know this better than I do, but if we end up with McDonald's and Chick-fil-A there, they may say the right in, right out doesn't work anymore. I don't know. But as far as what they're showing us, what they're proposing, how the access is, I'm okay with it.
And I think, I think to that point, Rich, right? If Greg makes assumptions for what's going in there, I mean, chances are, right? You know, he's not going to, it, it, it's not going to work, what you said, right? You know, too high impacts in there. It's kind of like Greg said, he's going to have to, he's going to have to bench his assumptions for what's going in so that the two things work.
Yeah.
Right? And then, and then, you know, he sets the tone, you know, D O T says, yep, that works. Then they can kind of move forward with what, with what works on that site. I don't know how better to describe it, right?
Why don't, why don't we move through the rest of the fellas? Arnie, do you have any general thoughts?
Just one question, Joe, and that is, what if, what if the restaurant comes along and the bank doesn't? Or vice versa?
And of course that'll change things. And that's, that's what our concern is. We don't want to be having the applicant doing things, getting specific site plan approval when in fact it, it might, like, very likely be changed later on.
Okay, rather than that, yeah, other than that, I'm okay with it.
And?
Yeah, I'm all, also okay with that. You keep saying Chick-fil-A. I couldn't see a Chick-fil-A there. I don't think there's enough room for that. But, you know, for a regular But, you know, for a regular restaurant, I mean, a regular McDonald's or something, it might work.
Okay, thanks. Mike?
I, I'm okay with it if we get some of these questions. I, I honestly think if we knew what was going in there, this obviously would be a lot easier for all of us, but, uh, you know, I, I think looking at this, other than, uh, you know, this right in, right out bothers me a little bit because if I'm coming from the village, it just means I got a longer way to get in there if I just want to go to the bank or either one of them. I mean, but I don't know how else you're going to do it, right, where that right in, right out is located, so. And my, my other concern, and I asked this last time, I think, is, you, you know, this driveway on Enders, does that have, are, are we sure that's not going to impact the daycare center?
Well, I, I, I'll answer a couple of your questions. Will it impact the daycare center? Absolutely. I mean, will it, will it have a, a, a significant impact? I don't think so. Um, it's a, it's a straight, it's a straight shot, you know, that, that, that traffic is not really mingling with the parking lot of a daycare center where the, you know, the daycare center kids get dropped off. If, if that daycare center building entrance was closer, I'd be much more concerned. But otherwise, it's really more like a, like a shopping center driveway where you've got out parcels, you know, on both sides of a, of a main driveway coming in. So it, the impact is, is going to be minimal. Um, when we were doing the original daycare center site, we had discussions with Betsy relative to that right in, right out. And she wanted a right in, right out. And typically in these circumstances, they want it because they, it eliminates some of that traffic impact to the signal itself. So in, instead of everybody having to come out of Enders Road and go to that signal, which impacts the signal, you know, they have, they want, you, you want to head to the Village of Manlis, you're going to take that right out and you're going to disappear into the Village of Manlius. And you don't have to go through the intersection of Enders and, and Casanova, uh, Manlis Road. And, and likewise, if you're going to, under a site, you can go straight in, you know, those right and right outs are free flowing. Um, they would not allow full access at that driveway just because it, it is too close to other turn lanes and other conflicting movements, uh, from other driveways in the area. So, you know, when it push, uh, comes to shove with the traffic study, I think they're going to be okay with a right in, right out pretty much no matter what because it, it has a positive to it and the location is significantly away from the intersection that it, it'll function fine. But that's also, that's always up to D O T, you know, when you do the traffic studies.
Okay.
Um, there was one other comment that you made that I wanted to address and uh, keep in mind, okay, we may come back to you next month and have a, a solid tenant for the restaurant and not one for the bank. So you, you may not, you know, th- these uses may not come through at the same time. No different than when the Plaza Kitty Corner came through and, and there was separate buildings or parcels that were approved, you know, so ideally, yeah, everything would come in at one time. But it's very common that a site like this, we would come in with one use that's in hand and the other one, we'd have to, we'd have to put an impact on it because you've kind of have to, you can't segment the site as far as seeker goes. You've got to kind of take your, your worst case scenario or logical use on that site to go through seeker. Um, so, you know, that's still very possible. Next month we'd come in and the bank will be all set and the other, uh, use won't be. And we'll just be, you know, conceptually designing a pad there with the understanding that we're going to come back with elevations and footprints and, and final stuff. Happens all the time.
And it may very well. And, and Mike, Mike, just keep in mind that they do need to come in with amended site plan for the daycare center and a site plan, which we haven't seen a, a formal site plan for the commercial piece. So we will be able to have input in the future in how the traffic flows and those types of things.
And I understand that, Rich. I, I mean, Joe just said, do you have any issues? I was just telling you what I was thinking about here at the time, you know, um.
No, those are great questions, Mike. Great comments.
Yeah, it's, that's a real concern. You mentioned it before. That is a concern.
I, I just wonder about, you know, daycare's letting out, it's, it's dinner time. I mean, I don't know what the hours of, of full operation are, but I just wonder about the congestion on Enders there and, you know, does it have any impact?
All good questions. Greg, you heard from us. We've given you our thoughts without, uh, moving forward to any final anything.
Yep.
It's up to the applicant on how to proceed from this point forward.
Well, I, I, I appreciate the board's input and guidance, um, and however we, however we proceed, uh, you know, I'm sure the next time we're back in front of you, we'll, you know, we'll have, uh, more answers and, uh, more detail.
Thank you, Greg. Okay.
Thank you. Have a great night.
All right, you too now.
Thanks.
Folks, we're down to, uh, the last four probably quick items on the agenda. The first one is an application by Deborah Kreischer for property located at 6547 North Manlius Road in Kirkville. This is an accessory use permit renewal to continue use as a hair salon. We've received a letter from Randy Caparati regarding this enterprise, which says there have been no complaints filed uh, in the last seven years. I'll make a motion to extend.
I'll second.
I second it for seven years.
By Richard and second by Mike. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion carries. This, this was, uh, you did make it for seven years, right, Rich?
Exactly.
Okay.
I cut out there for a little while, but I said seven years.
They should all be for seven years.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's our general thought. The second is an application by Michael Heath. And this is his property located at 7913 East Ridge Point Drive in Fayetteville. And that is where he is running a pastoral counseling. Uh, we also have the letter from Randy Caparati indicating that there have been no complaints in the last seven years. I'll make a motion to prove it for seven more years. Motion by Richard.
I'll second it.
A second by Arnie?
Yep.
All in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Motion carries. The next application is an application by John Farnich for property located at 7521 High Bridge Road in Manlius. There he has been running a photography studio. And Randy Caparati has also indicated in the last seven years, there have been no complaints filed relative to this property.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Motion by Ann?
Second. Joe, Joe, just a comment, did, did everybody see? It looks like, uh, his days of operations are going to change.
I, I didn't see that, Mike.
They, if you go to number eight on the access, on the application, his previous was Monday to Friday. It looks like he's shortening it Tuesday to Thursday.
Oh, okay. And I'm presuming that's a good thing for the neighbors.
Yeah, I'm just, I had just pointed out, I, I, I don't have an issue with it. It's just a change.
Okay. Well, since it's a less intrusive and less, uh, uh, traffic congestive, um, trusting that's a good thing. I have a motion by Ann. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Arnie. All in favor?
Hi.
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 He's been there for years.
Okay, there's an I, Ann? Yes.
Yeah, yes.
Motion carries. And the last one is an application by Eureka LLC. This is property located at 7136 East Genesee Street in Fayetteville, where they are maintaining a law office. Similarly, Randy has indicated he has no complaints in the last seven years of operation. I would entertain a motion.
I would move that we extend the renewal for seven years.
Second.
Motion by Fred, second by Rich. All in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Motion carries. Other business. I've been informed by our member, uh, Frank Mento. He has submitted a letter of resignation effective January 1st. He wanted to let the board know that, know that he has enjoyed working with the board and he wishes us well. And we similarly wish him well in his career with the county now. Any other business?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'm moving to make adjourn.
And you beat Fred. We have a motion made by Ann and second by Fred to adjourn. All in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Stand, we stand adjourned.
Thanks for bearing with me tonight, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
Lisa, good job. Lisa, good job.
It was, it was perfect.
Good, thank you.
Everyone.
Talk to you later. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.